We called a meeting, to order the meeting in Williamsport City Council this Thursday, September 26, 2019, a little past 7:30 PM in the city council chambers. Please rise for the invocation by Councilman Joe Henderson and remain standing for the flag salute.
Our Father in Heaven, we are so grateful for all the blessings that you give to us. We enjoy freedom here, we enjoy safety, we enjoy so many wonderful things in this valley. And we recognize that all these good things come from you, and so we give you that glory and that thanks for these things. But Lord, we pray that you would continue to bless us here. We pray for your continued protection over these citizens here and those that serve in harm's way. Lord, we pray that now as we do the business of the city tonight, that you would give us wisdom as we face challenges and endeavor to make decisions. Lord, help us to strive for unity, help us to move forward. We pray that you would help us always to be mindful that the decisions that we make here are not for our own sake, but they are for the sake of all of the citizens here in this city. And so, Lord, help us to be mindful of that. And Lord, also, we pray that you would awaken our consciences to the truth. May we be aware of what is true and what is false, and may we make decisions based on that principle of desiring to do what is right. And Lord, help us take our rightful place under God, in this we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move into the rest of the agenda, just for your information, if you grabbed an agenda from the table on your way in, items seven and eight on that agenda, the College Street address and renaming have been removed from the agenda tonight. So, your numbers aren't going to add up with ours as we go through this, but those two are off the agenda. We'll go to item three then. Approval of city council minutes dated 9/12/19.
So move. Second.
Motion in second. Is there a discussion or corrections? If not, Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Fosna.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Item four, limited courtesy of the floor, we've had one request tonight, Mr. Bruce Huffman.
Thank you, Councilman Allison, members of council, members of administration. Before I speak, I just want to say that you often know that I read things about history, so if this is related to some people or institutions in the room, I mean no ill will by this, okay? As far as item number six, if it's still that, the six-year capital budget, I've always supported the bureaus of police and fire. However, I was quite surprised to learn that the city is even thinking about a $15 million public safety building listed in the ordinance when it seems to have so many more pressing issues. Item number nine, Ways Garden easement agreement. Mr. and Mrs. J. Roman Way donated the land for and established Ways Garden in 1913 per Select Council Bill Number 60. Mr. Way died on August 4, 1935. In his will, he left two additional gifts related to Ways Garden. In item 10, he bequeathed $20,000 in a trust fund with the income to be used, quote, "for the purpose of maintaining the garden." In item 18, he gave devised and bequeathed, quote, "the plot of ground about 75 by 150 feet adjoining Ways Garden on the southeast side, bounded on the south by Clark Street or alley, on the north by the household of Joseph K." Mr. Way further stated that, quote, "this gift is to be under the same conditions and restrictions as contained in the deed conveying Ways Garden to said city, and is only to be used for Ways Garden purposes." In accepting the $20,000 bequest and additional parcel of ground, Ordinance 1509 approved October 17, 1935, stated, quote, "the device to the city of Williamsport of the plot of ground is hereby approved and accepted under the terms and conditions in such will." The ordinance further stated that, quote, "the good faith and credit of the city are hereby pledged to the performance on the part of the city of all the terms and provisions set forth in this section." I wonder what J. Roman Way would think about the good faith of the city in allowing a perpetual easement onto a portion of his gift to the citizens of Williamsport. Item 13, City Hall Elevator and Ramp. When the U.S. courthouse and post office was completed in 1891, this building, although this section was not here then, it had no elevator. An elevator was not installed until 64 years later. This building was added to the National Register of Historic Places in 1972 after the threat of demolition. There are few city halls in Pennsylvania that even come close to the grandeur of this monumental structure. It would be good to look for ways to preserve and honor the architectural gem that it is. According to the website of Reynolds, the city's construction management contractor, there has been well over $27 million spent in the last 10 years on mostly transportation-related projects and development in the city, much of it paid for by grants. That doesn't even count this year's multimillion-dollar projects. Now, did you know that the Northumberland County was recently awarded a Keystone Grant from the PHMC to study and create a plan for preserving its 154-year-old courthouse? Or that Point Township, also in Northumberland County, recently received a $500,000 RACB grant to renovate and expand its township building? Or that Loyal Sock Township is using CDBG money to renovate, or excuse me, to remove architectural barriers per the ADA in its township building? I understand there has been little to no effort made to explore similar grant funding opportunities for City Hall and wonder why. Lastly, item 21, related to lot consolidation of Basin Street. While the widening of Basin Street will hopefully be a traffic safety benefit to all citizens of Williamsport, I hope the historic name of Basin Street directly related to Williamsport's canal transportation days will be retained and celebrated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huffman. I am going to move items 18, 19, 20, and 21. Mr. Girardi, I should have told you ahead of time, up to the top here because we do have a long agenda and we can expedite this part for those who are waiting for their certificates to be approved.
Good evening, President Allison and members of council. What you have before you is a certificate of appropriateness request for 321 Pine Street for Blackman's tantalizing treats. What they're requesting to do is put two window identification signs up. I have attached a copy of what they look like. They are up presently right now. This did go through the planning commission, was recommended with, was a positive recommendation. One thing that you need to realize, these types of signs do not require a building or zoning permit. The individuals, when they put them up, were not aware of the appropriateness, so we wanted to make sure that they came in front of council in case there was any issues concerning this. But as I said, planning commission recommended positive approval.
Thank you, Mr. Girardi. Questions or comments from council? Ms. Katz.
Was this another business?
Yes.
What was it called?
No, no. This here is a new business.
But this is a new business?
This is a new business. There is a ice cream parlor down the alleyway, or I'd call it the alleyway, but the Pine Square, down at the other end.
Okay, so this is, this is off.
Yeah, this is on Pine Street. The parking authority used to be in this building.
Okay.
And then they relocated over right down the street from us.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mealy.
I've actually had the pleasure of having ice cream from here once or twice already, and they're a welcome addition to downtown. That said, I just, I noticed, I think, that at least three of these certificates of appropriateness apply to signage or other things that are already in place. Remind me again, that involves doubling of the fee for the application process?
If there was a permit required for this, you're correct. Reason why there's not a zoning or building permit required is because there's no structure involved. These are peel-off, paste-on to a window. There's nothing really for me to look at structurally and nothing zoning-wise, other than making sure that it completes, you know, it's a business identification sign.
Okay, so there's not a doubling of the fee for this type of appropriateness?
Not on this particular one, that's correct.
Got it, okay. Misunderstood. Is, not that it's a huge deal, but of course, as a, you know, any of us, I think, would feel terrible making someone remove signage that they had had designed and installed because it didn't, for some reason, meet some standard that the city has. Is there a notification mechanism that we can come up with that means that people, you know, that, because, you know, it would just really be a shame.
I would say typically, we don't usually have an issue with these signs. Usually, we get them before they go up. These three signage that you're going to come up, did go up without the notification prior to, and, or the other, other sign, I'm sorry, that's coming up, did. Now, that one, I can explain at that time why it went up and the reason why he put it up without notifying us.
Right. Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking that it seems as though there should be a, I mean, we've got a pretty small downtown, there should be some way we can reach out and just kind of convey to people that that's, you know, that that's part of the package.
We're in the process of basically adding something within the zoning plan to explain to people these do require permits with the assembly district, so that's only on the website.
Okay, all right, great. That'll be at least a help. All right, thank you. That's all.
Other questions or comments? We move on this one.
We need to move?
Oh, we, yeah, we didn't move. I mean, we didn't have a motion. Is there a motion?
I'm sorry. Second.
Motion in second. We've had our discussion, so Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Fosna.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes. Item 19 then.
Yes. What you have before you is a request for, is it, is not doing all my ones? Oh, okay, I'll sit over to the side. You go right ahead.
Good evening, President Allison and members of council. What we present to you tonight is a lot consolidation request from Lycoming College and the dedication of land. What the plan proposes is to consolidate seven parcels.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Nard. We have a problem because we have a different.
A different agendas?
Yeah. We were going to do all the certificate appropriatenesses first.
So you're up, Joe.
I'm going to have to get a copy of.
The other agenda.
The other agenda.
Okay, so we're back to.
Joe, you dressed up for this too, didn't you?
I did. This is, this is actually the request for the window, if I'm correct. Boom City, you're on presently right now. What you have before you is a request, certificate appropriateness request, to remove an existing section of storefront windows, that is, and provide a roll-up door and wood trim. I have attached a picture of what has occurred and what has been done. The owner of this, when they first came in for their permit, applied for the permit for the canopy and the signage, which was approved by council probably a year or two ago. Also, they did some renovation work, which was approved by council at that time. The owner of the property assumed that he had a permit for this window installation, which he did not. Okay? So, again, I bring it before you, a permit was, will be issued, the fee will be doubled. Also, it does meet the standards, design standards, the aluminum frame matches the aluminum that's there now, and wood is permitted as a trim material in the downtown design as long as it's not a primary of the building, which this is not. If you have any questions of myself, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them.
Are there any questions from council members tonight? We'll have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion in second. There were no questions, so Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mrs. Fosna.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. So, on your agendas, we're going to go to item 22, and on our agendas, it's item 20.
And this is the, for the other sign, if I'm correct. Okay. What you have before you is, again, another certificate appropriateness request for install wall-mounted identification sign. The sign, I have attached a picture to it. Probably three years ago, the Mad Potter, if you remember, is next door, they came in for a permit for that sign. The owner, again, assumed he had a permit for both signs, and as soon as he rented the other one out, or his, I believe it's his wife that actually runs both businesses, he put this sign up. The same thing would occur, as I said before, putting a sign up prior to, taking a permit out would be a double permit. The sign matches the characteristics of the building. The inlay of the mirrors and so forth is very similar to what we approved down on the Firestone Building. And we do have a representative here, if you have any questions of him or myself.
Question from council tonight.
Question. It bothers me that we're assuming things, that people are assuming they've had permission to do this and assuming they have permission to do that, and yet, they haven't had permission to do it.
That's correct.
And it goes up, and then we have to decide whether that can stay up or it comes down, and that's just not right.
Correct, and I would say if it, I'm not disagreeing with you, but if this is something that's constantly ongoing, I do agree 100%. Typically, this does not occur, okay? There was, under the permit, when somebody came in for a permit for a sign, they're assuming they had a permit for both signs. The other one's Boom City, he came in for a permit to do renovation work, he assumed that he had that. Those drawings were never submitted to me, so by the time we found out what was going on, they were already up. But I would say nine out of 10 times, this does not occur, especially in the downtown, because we're always walking through the downtown, we drive through the downtown. If we see construction going on without a permit, we will stop them from work. This is one of those things where probably in three hours, they could put that sign up. So that's why. And typically, like I said, it does not occur in the city. We try to get on it and make sure it doesn't happen. Council still has the ability to turn around and say, "We don't like it, we want you to remove it." And they are penalized by that double permit fee. So there is a penalty involved in doing something without a permit.
Yeah, but we don't want to discourage anyone in business downtown. We like their business in town.
Correct.
But they need to, there are procedures and policies that are behind that.
Correct.
So it seems the communication that is, we're going to have, needs to be very clear, maybe not just on the website, maybe it needs to be some personal visits to those companies and businesses so that they know that this is the procedure that's important for them to go through.
Right. What typically happens is a lot of times, somebody will go into a business and they're not doing any renovation work, they're just occupying the space, need an occupancy permit, okay? When we see something going on in the building in downtown that they don't notify us on, we end up going in and stopping them so we can know what's going on and issue the proper permits for that.
I see.
In a perfect world, I agree with you 100%, but things do sometimes happen. We could cite the individual, we could turn around and make them take the sign down, we try to be a little bit more business-friendly in that respect and make them go through the process, and the thing what would end up happening is paying that double fee. So hopefully, next time, if they move to a different location or somebody else, they'll get the understanding, they'll get the word that they need to come in and apply for that permit prior to the installation.
Mrs. Katz.
When I moved downtown 18 years ago, I don't know who did this and how it came about, but before I even started, I was just starting to paint the inside of my store, someone came and handed me a sheet of what was required for signage, for what permits were needed for everything, and it really was helpful. I knew exactly what size sign I was permitted to have, what I could put on my windows, and I don't, I don't think that's done at all. I don't know, I don't know who did that, okay?
Right.
I don't remember. It's too long ago, but it was very helpful, if that could possibly be done.
What we can do is we can do a query of all buildings, owners in the downtown central business district. We can send them a letter explaining to them clearly, this is a process, whether it be signage, whether there be any remodeling, anything as far as that within downtown.
Correct.
We can pull that query and send it.
May I suggest that you get a response from them? You, you want them to respond to you to make sure that you know that they've read the material?
The question is, sign and level, we'll do is a form letter saying that they are aware that this has to happen, this needs to be sent back to us.
They need to do that. It helps tremendously if you know where you can go and where you're going to spend your money. Absolutely. You know?
Other questions from council tonight? Hearing none, is there a motion on this item?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion in second. Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Fosna.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Frank. Motion passes. We're moving to item 23, that the public agenda has, and item 21 on the council agenda.
Yes, what you have before you is, again, a certificate of appropriateness request for 333 East Third Street. This request does the following. The owner of the property wants to brick the entire front of the building, the portion facing West Third Street, the brick will match the existing brick that faces Penn Street side. A black canopy will be installed over the entrance door, approximately 10 foot long by 4 foot high. I have attached a photo of the front of the building. The owner has a scaffaw ready to brick and do the work as soon as he gets his approval. The Penn Street side was previously approved with an appropriateness for that brick. This has been in the gateway area, it's one of the last buildings, it really needs to be facelift in a parking lot and so forth, put in, and the owner's starting to do that. So, again, if you have any questions of myself, I'm more than happy to answer that. And I have attached pictures showing you what the building looks like, what the Penn Street side looks like, and also what the black canopy is going to look like.
Thank you, Mr. Girardi. Questions?
I don't have a question, but let me tell you what, this building needed to be done a long time ago. This has been an ice sore for a while, and I'm really pleased this is going to be done.
Seeing no other comments or questions, is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Motion in second. Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Fosna.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank.
Thank you.
We will, thank you, Mr. Girardi. We'll move up to item five, and it's the same on everyone's agenda. Mr. Berger, please.
Before I start with this, I'm going to just break right into the computer, it has a two-minute video to go along with it, so I'll digress from the podium here and do my thing.
... in the 2020 census. But what is the census? If we poll, the census is a head count of every person living in the United States. To be sure the government represents the people, the U.S. Constitution requires a population count every 10 years. Ever since 1790, the census has determined the number of seats each state receives in the U.S. House of Representatives. It is, and always has been, a cornerstone of our democracy. We still use it to determine representation, but leaders also use the data to make decisions. Your response helps guide planning for the future of our communities. The 2020 census will help inform decisions on how billions of dollars are allocated annually for critical public services like roads, schools, hospitals and health care clinics, fire and emergency response services, and hundreds of other programs. In 2020, for the first time, you'll be able to complete the census online, by phone, or by mail. It asks a few simple questions, like how many people live in your home on April 1st, including their age and sex, and if there are any children living there. You should know that by law, all census responses are completely confidential, and your personal information cannot be shared with any law enforcement agency. Every person counts, no matter who you are or where you live. So whether your family has participated for decades, or the 2020 census will be your first, we all have a role in shaping the picture of our future.
That's okay. We'll talk over it. As we said, the Constitution requires a census. Our first census was in 1790. It is a part of the permanent, part of the Commerce Department as we speak. My error in having that play, but. What we can also look at is it does do the nation's population count. In terms of dollars amounts, that was referenced in the video, it is $675 billion. The value of the census is a statistical measure. It is continual on a year-to-year basis. Biggest thing on the bottom is that the census is setting a basis for information for the next decade. Thank you. Yeah, that's even better. For the next decade. So what we're doing in the next six months does set a precedent, does set the goals for what the city will be facing through the year 2030. In Williamsport, there are 10 census tracts. We have discussed this last council meeting, with an average response rate of around, or an average non-response rate of around 23%, one in four people. The highest of the areas goes at 35%. It's one in three. On the right-hand side of the list, very simply, is why we need to do. So what's next for Williamsport? There will be, following this in the resolution sections, a resolution that we've asked council to adopt that authorizes or begins the process for a complete count committee. That is a representative group, a cross-sectional group from the city, to enable, engage, educate, and outreach to many different facets within the city, neighborhoods, groups, institutions, locations, and just spread the word, to motivate people. Williamsport School District has voiced their support. Major institutions, both Lycoming and Penn College, are on board. UPMC, as a nonprofit institution, is also on board. There are several faith-based institutions, churches, as well as their leadership, that will be participating. Social media is going to be active, and we talk about social agencies, which would reflect Center for Independent Living, Step United Way also. As the video said, there is no sharing of PII, that's Personal Identifiable Information. Census is very secure. Census is also very selfish. They will not share, we will not share the information with the IRS, with law enforcement, with the state agencies, with ICE. We, the census employees, are essentially governed by Title 13 in the U.S. Code. And as I said, there were three ways to respond, something new this year, hopefully that will entice people. I'm going to leave this frame up for a moment. This is the last one. Census in Lycoming County will be hiring about 1,000 people. Right now, the number is about 250. will be hiring about 1,000 people. Right now, the number is about 250. I believe that was in the paper the other day, too. It is part-time, 15 to 30 hours a week. The website is active and it can also be done by phone. There is no test that is involved. It is simply your honest answers. There will be a phone call that follows to the applicant to verify some of that information and that gets put back into the queue. The average hiring process takes about a month. So those people beginning the process today would probably not be beginning until November or into Thanksgiving time. So short and sweet and simple for this. Again, the crucial part is the resolution that's pending, that is on agenda. Again, the hiring process is vital to the efforts. More that people will take up the initiative to make the applications, the better it will be for the city. And with that, I'll say thank you very much. Again.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Are there any comments or questions from? Well, we're going to talk about the resolution so we can save those. Joel, can you hit the light? And I want to move that resolution up. It's eight on council agenda. And 10, if you're following in the audience, presented by the mayor. And Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
Resolution for the 2020 census and the city of Williamsport.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. Welcome, Mayor Campana.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, Adam Vice President, members of City Council. Before you, we have a resolution in regards to the 2020 census. And first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Berger for his proactiveness and I'm sure you're really going to make a difference in this process. So I just want to thank you on that. The other thing I'd like to briefly comment is that this resolution speaks about a team approach for outreach to motivate many individuals in this community. And I would appreciate City Council's support because this is crucial to our financial stability. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Campana. Public Works, I believe, reviewed this?
I don't think anybody reviewed it.
Oh.
It wasn't reviewed.
I'll handle it though.
I have it on the...
No problem.
Maybe it was removed. Okay. I had it on one of them. In any case. Oh, yeah. Resolution for the 2020 census of the city of Williamsport. All right.
Discuss it.
It never happened. Okay. So questions or comments from council then?
I have a question. The one question I have is for Mr. Berger. You say you're looking for 1,000 people for the jobs and it is a part-time job for 15 to 30 hours a week. If you don't reach the 100, the 1,000 people, then will this turn into full-time hours for some people?
Tremendous question. I don't have a good answer for that.
Okay.
I, I can check with the recruiting director. He is based out of State College and get back to you. But at this point, I don't have an answer for you.
Mrs. Fosna?
Mr. Berger, is there any plan to contact the hospital, UPMC? We employ more people there than anywhere else in the county.
Onboard already, yes. We have their marketing director who has been tasked to be part of the complete count committee.
Excellent. Thank you.
Other question? Mr. Henderson?
I think I remember you mentioning last time that you have some ideas as to who would be able to serve on this committee already. I mean, is there, I guess, I'm wondering, is this something that we're all putting, you know, naming people to, or how do people get appointed exactly to this committee?
About a month ago, Mayor Campana and myself sat down. We generated a list of about 25 individuals. Synonymously, we overlapped a lot. Mayor Campana offered a few. There were a few other people that stepped up and volunteered just from our individual circles. It is not by any means a closed group. We look to expand. There is optimally, you know, if you get 50 people in, you're just going to start to spin wheels. But the other complete count committees that I am involved with in both Tioga County and Bradford County, they are slowly expanding. So as they, the commissioners there have overlooked a group or two, they're being brought in as the process moves forward.
Okay. So in, in some respects, what we're doing here is just giving, should it be approved, giving our, you know, hearty stamp of approval, go get them guys kind of thing. Okay. I just wanted to be clear on exactly...
That's exactly, exactly right, sir.
Great, great. Thank you.
Ms. Mealy?
Just two more questions, I guess, about that. How many people on average are involved in the other counties in which you're?
In Tioga County, currently there are 22.
Okay.
And again, represent, cross-representational for that particular county. In Bradford, it is at 18.
Okay.
But also growing.
And I assume there's then obviously a chair and...
Yes.
Officers and things like that to keep, you know...
Chairman and secretary, and that's it.
Got it. And my last question is, are these meetings public, advertised?
The initial meeting will be at the Trade and Transit Center, Monday upcoming.
Okay.
3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Unfortunately, council has conflicts at that point. The rest of the meetings are yet to be determined.
Okay.
But we will be reporting back to council on an open basis.
Okay. I, I guess, I think even if you're not necessarily serving on the committee, it might be handy for people to be able to drop in and ask questions and/or get information in the course.
Right.
So the better advertised they are, the, the better. That's everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? If not, Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Berger. We will be moving to... Give me a second so I can line these up. Item six on both agenda. An ordinance adopting the six-year capital budget project. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
An ordinance adopting a six-year capital projects budget for the city of Williamsport for fiscal years ending June 30th, 2020 to June 30th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Nichols?
Thank you and good evening. Again, this ordinance is on second reading. Originally, we had expected to, or I expected to review this with the planning commission at their last meeting, but that's been rescheduled for next Monday. So the only caveat that I'm suggesting is that we're asking approval of the second reading with acknowledging that it would be subject to review and approval by the planning commission next Monday, which, you know, I don't expect to be an issue. But just wanted to make that clarification if that's okay.
Ms. Mealy?
Actually, I apologize, Mr. Nichols. I'd completely forgotten our conversation about this on Tuesday.
I thought you had it.
At the time, when we, when we discussed it, I had recommended that perhaps we, we table our approval of this until the planning commission has reviewed it. I mean, we're not under any particular timeframe, time, time crunch to get it filed.
Fine as well.
So, so, you know, it's, it's a, it's a pretty minor step, but just in case the planning commission has some sort of concern that, that we feel we should address before it's passed, that this way it's on part of the record. I would also note that the other thing I forgot, Mr. Cooley back there behind the camera, is that I had asked if we might amend the, the IT budget to look at potentially working in a city council going digital at some point in the next, in the next five to six years. Simply, I think, a huge cost.
Well, then that would give us time to reconfigure the IT budget.
That, that, that was, that was what I was thinking. I thought, man, I forgot to follow up on that. Oh, wait. Anyway, I would, in, given, given both of those items, I would move that we table this until the next council meeting.
Okay.
That's, we see that as a friendly motion.
Yes.
I was trying to make it friendly.
That was a motion? Are you making that motion?
I am, yes.
Second, second. There's a motion and a second to table. I don't believe we can discuss that, so... Mrs. Frank, on the motion to table, please.
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Motion passes. Then while you're up there, Mr. Nichols, we have item seven, resolution to approve an easement agreement. Mrs. Frank, on the motion, please.
Resolution to approve an easement agreement between the city of Williamsport and McCormick Associates, Inc.
Is there a motion from council?
So moved. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Mr. Nichols?
Thank you and good evening again. Before you is the, was this, is this coming off the table? No, this is, or...
Oh, yeah, we need to remove it from the table. Thank you.
Was it?
Okay, it wasn't listed as...
It's not, well...
I don't recall.
The, the resolution itself has not changed, correct, Mr. Nichols?
Resolution is not changing as we are substituting updated agreement from the... Just want to make that clarification.
So I think we probably should remove it from the table, Mr. White?
The clerk, Mrs. Frank, says that this was tabled approximately four weeks ago.
Yeah. The, the resolution was tabled. The agreement in the meantime has been altered, but the resolution itself was tabled.
So this could be considered a new matter?
I think that you could submit it as a new matter rather than removing it from the table.
Okay. Excellent. Okay.
We'll start from scratch.
Okay. All right. So again, I guess, okay.
Continue.
All right. Before you is this updated easement agreement between the city of Williamsport and McCormick Associates. And this relates to a parcel of land behind property owned by McCormick Associates as part of what is known as Waze Garden. This updated agreement seeks to resolve issues raised by various stakeholders and better clarifies that the land and the intended improvements support the current Waze Garden improvement project and acts as a long-term resource for public use of the park. The document ensures and defines what the city's exclusive rights are to a new parking lot to be constructed by McCormick Associates. And this actually works out to about 75 percent of the time where the city has exclusive rights to the parking lot. And this is set forth in section nine of the agreement. And also states that three designated spots, including one required handicap accessible parking stall, which is a grant requirement, will be available to the city without any restrictions. Also, which I think is important, that this document was revised to establish a partnership with the easement holder to ensure that the new parking lot is properly maintained for the benefit of Waze Garden. And this includes definitions as to what is required for normal yearly maintenance and long-term needed capital improvements. So on behalf of the administration, we would ask your favorable consideration of this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Questions or comments? Oh, this was reviewed by finance or not?
Actually, no.
No, we didn't.
I don't believe this item was reviewed by any committee.
Okay, this was not reviewed in committee.
Next round.
So let's start with questions or comments. The original one was the... Mr. Henderson?
If, if this is a new item, should it not come to a committee?
It did. It was reviewed by finance.
It wasn't reviewed by finance after the, pending the changes is Joel's point.
The new agreement was reviewed by finance. New easement agreement with all the changes in it were reviewed.
I believe you're remembering the executive session we had on Tuesday.
Okay. I, I thought we...
I'll defer to the members of finance. We did not review this item, correct?
I thought it was reviewed, but...
So if it is, if, if it's, if it's the other resolution that was tabled, that's been to the, been to committee. But this is not, we just agreed, so that it has not been to a committee because this is a new item. I just want to make sure you understand that process is important to me because I think we need to do this well and orderly. The other question I have is, do, I don't think I have a hard copy of this easement agreement. Is that correct? I mean, we have, I think I received one via email. Because I have three hard copies and one digital copy. I'm trying to figure out which one we're going for. And so I understand that you, this has been a long, drawn-out process. But it'd be good for us to have something that we can actually take a, take a look at and, and hold on to. So I'm, I'm concerned about that. The other thing I'm concerned about is that it is a perpetual easement agreement. And personally, I'm not comfortable with a perpetual agreement. The other thing that I'm concerned about is the deed restrictions that I believe in some of our discussions was brought up. So my question is, have we looked at the deed restrictions that say that it, that parcel of land is to be for the park use only? How does this fit legally? Has that been addressed legally?
I guess I, from, from my point of view, when I looked at it and I, I became involved with this and looking at the, or the, the will of J. Roman Way, it states in there that this is, this, he was giving this to the city upon his death. The small parcel was to be added on to what was already given to the city by J. Roman Way. And at the point in time when it was given to the city, it was, it was like a vegetable garden used by the superintendent. It was where trash was stored and things like that. So it simply refers to that it's given additionally for, to be added to Waze Garden and it cites the previous donation to the city. And it does mention about certain terms and conditions, but it doesn't really go into any detail in the will itself.
I do have a digital copy of that.
And I have a hard copy there as well. It's tough to read, but...
Yes. And I, I believe it says here, let's see. Let's see. "In trust nevertheless for the following uses and for purpose of, for none other..." Well, I'm not seeing exactly where it is. Give me just a moment here. Okay, "This gift is to be under the same conditions and restricted as contained in the deed conveying Waze Garden to said city and is only to be used for Waze Garden purposes and is now used as a tool house for temporary storage." And it goes on also a...
Vegetable.
Vegetable garden. So I, I think I would need a legal opinion on that.
Well, again, and that's why we did the clarification, is just a couple of changes from what you originally had considered and to better define exclusivity, which is 75 percent of the time, and also the benefits to Waze Garden. And so it does say that it needs to support and benefit Waze Garden, which it does. And that's why we better define that exclusive to Waze Garden 75 percent of the time. And also seeks to define the maintenance for a long period of time to get, you know, because it is professional easement, this gave us the opportunity to put language in there that says, okay, it's perpetual easement, so we have a partnership, so it ensures that it's properly maintained for years to come, which I think is a great thing because it does give a definition in terms of improvements, capital improvements and annual maintenance requirements. And so I think it clearly says in the document how it benefits Waze Garden and supports the current project at hand. And so I think it meets that definition of it's to benefit Waze Garden.
I'm not against the project, but this... I'm not against the project, but this is troubling to me. Seventy-five percent of the time, that would, I'm assuming, include all of the nighttime hours.
Right, exactly. It's a...
So that how many of the nighttime hours is the park permitted to be used?
They... I'm not sure... Well, they... During business hours, which is about forty-five hours, they would have use of the lot. And then at all other times, which if you take the number of hours in a week, it's one hundred and sixty-eight hours, so the rest of the time...
I understand the math, but the practicality is, I think, quite obvious. We can say seventy-five percent, but then we can arrest people for going to the park after dark, because they're not allowed. So we can't have it both ways. And so, I'm not sure that that number is accurate. It's good for argument reasons, I suppose, but I don't think that it's accurate.
And that's why when we defined the partnership in terms of maintenance, it was fifty-fifty. Because you're right, you can argue that obviously in the middle of the night, there's not much utilization for the park.
Right.
So that's why... You know, so if we would recommend, you know, that we are required to take seventy percent of their maintenance, that wouldn't be a fair argument. So I agree with you totally. That's why we made it fifty-fifty.
The process as well, as far as drafting this ordinance, I do understand that we had a... An attorney, Jill Nagy, involved in the very first one, which we don't have before us now.
She was involved right through the... to the end.
Right through to the one that was emailed to us?
Yes, I consulted with her on what the final language was.
I guess I was not aware of that. From what I understood, there was a meeting earlier this... Was it this week or last week? Where the attorneys involved were both from McCormick Law Firm in that meeting. Is that correct? That is correct. Where there was much discussion on that.
That's correct, but then I consulted Jill on the language.
Okay. So then the other difficulty that I'm having with this is that I feel that the city is underrepresented. And so, I will have to vote no on this, because it's perpetual, because the city is not represented legally well, I don't think, and the deed restrictions prevent me from voting yes on this resolution. Thank you.
Mrs. Katz?
During some of our discussions, we found out from the commission themselves that one of their objectives was to put a parking lot in for their own use. So what this does is it has someone else putting in the parking lot with Way's Gardens being able to use it for their events. And most of the time, what's happening in Way's Gardens is there are a lot of weddings that are going to be taking place in the weekends, a lot of other activities. So... And I know that Bob really wanted to have a parking lot there to make it convenient for some of the people that are using the new pavilion at this point. As far as perpetual, we talked about this and had a long conversation about it. If McCormick Law Firm does sell the building, sell their business, and they move out of there, whoever gets that building would have to renegotiate the contract of what the...
No, they wouldn't.
This is what we were told.
No, they would have to renegotiate it if they wanted to alter it in some way, but otherwise it would continue as is.
No, that is not what we were told.
It would continue as is.
I think there were discussions about, you know, right now, the document states that the easement runs with the land. And I think McCormick was adamant about that remaining there. And that's why we talked about adding language. We came up with that, the maintenance part of it, that there is a commitment to a partnership in terms of long-term capital improvements. And so that they can't shed their responsibility. If indeed they would sell the property to someone else and they do not keep the parking lot in good shape, then that was a concern. So, instead of changing language in terms of running with the land, we came up with that there is a commitment to maintain it as a parking lot in perpetuity. So it remains in good shape.
But it would still... The hours of the usage
Remains the same.
That remain the same.
Right. So what... Yeah, well, I think what was discussed was if there was another use allowed for that building and, in other words, the new owner and the intended user needed that parking lot at hours other than what are specified in the easement, then they would have to come back to the city to get that approved.
Right.
So that's correct, if that's what you're referring to.
That's where I'm coming from.
Yes.
That it's...
They are stuck with the hours that are indicating easement.
And as we said, this is only useful to an office moving into that building if it was sold, you know, from the hours of eight-thirty to five-thirty. To me, this is very beneficial to Way's Gardens. What it's going to do is they're going to put lighting, it's going to enhance that part of the park, it's going to make it look a lot more inviting than what it is right now. And to me, I think it's... I mean, I'm happy that somebody's willing to put sixty thousand dollars into this. And it saves the Way's Gardens Commission trying to go out and solicit funds for something that they wanted to begin with. So, to me, I think this is... I'm happy with this. I'm happy with what has the legal ease. And we did talk to Jill Nagy after we did meet with McCormick Law Firm. And she guaranteed so many different things of what she went over. She looked at every aspect of this document. So I feel very comfortable. It wasn't done strictly with McCormick Law Firm. It was also done with Jill Nagy. So I do feel comfortable with it.
Ms. Mealy?
Not to prolong this process, which frankly has already been long enough already, but I actually do agree with Joel's point that if we have changed the agreement, and we somewhat have substantially, that perhaps it should go back to committee before it comes back, before the full body of counsel. In this case, and perhaps the finance committee. I think it went to Public Works and it could go back there for further review. I'm more than happy, obviously, to go with the wishes of counsel. But I would say that if we have a new agreement, that perhaps it should go back for further review. To Councilman Henderson's point about usage, I think I did the math when we were discussing it the other day. And it's... I want to say, I'm assuming the hours of the park being dusk till dawn, and so you're winding up with basically fifty-fifty share. And Mr. Nichols is correct, that then the allocation in terms of repaving whenever that becomes necessary is fair. We're each receiving fifty percent use of the lot, right? And I... So that's... But seventy-five percent would definitively be inaccurate. We don't allow anyone... We don't encourage use of our parks from dusk till dawn. And I think if we were to see cars in the parking lot from dusk till dawn, it would be a matter for concern, not a matter for rejoicing that we were getting our full seventy-five percent. That said, I do appreciate... I know that we spent a simply ridiculous amount of time discussing this agreement and that McCormick has also spent quite a bit of time in discussions with us. And that frankly, this agreement has been in existence in some form or another since long before City Council got involved with it. So there's been a lot of time put into this. And I appreciate, I think, the parts of... The patience on the parts of the people who have been introduced to it long before we have in our learning curve and our objections. But I do share Mr. Henderson's concerns. I share a couple of his concerns related to the perpetuity of the easement and also the process in this case. And while I think that it is an exceptionally generous agreement on the part of law firm, I also think that we are stewards of the city's interests. And I'm not certain, no matter how generous it is, that it's in the best interest of the city. So I'm frankly still making up my mind. But I... If there were a motion to remand it back to committee, I probably would support that.
Mrs. Katz?
We've listened to McCormick Law Firm, who has worked with the Way's Gardens Commission for five years on this. Yes, this came to us in the last few months only. And I think they have been very patient, waiting for an answer for this. And I think it's about time that we say yes to this, to get it over and done with. You know, it's... I mean, it's... To have somebody that's going to give the city something that's not going to cost us anything, and then we're going to sit here and we're going to give them a hard time over every... A nitpick over everything when we think we have every base covered. I mean, I can't see where we're giving this away. I think we're benefiting from it. And there are stopgaps in this, just in case we are covering our bases. So I don't see a problem with this. And I think we've... It's gone on too long.
Mr. Noviello?
I don't really much have any trouble with the arrangements that have been made regarding the property in and of itself. But we, on this council, for a number of years now, and not in too distant past, have been dealing with old conditions, old resolutions, old codes, old variances. And they have herded us in many ways with progressive moves. And I don't know that this here stands out to that degree, but I do think that it's one more of those chances. The arrangements that were made, the accommodations that McCormick offers, I think, are perfectly fine. I would rather see it become something renewable over a period of time as opposed to something in perpetuity, only for the sake of the fact that we don't know what's coming in the future. If we were to speak to Mr. Way today, I'm sure he'd be, you know, asking us, you know, some questions about our own degree of progress and how things have changed themselves. So I don't want to put another counsel in the same position years down the line for something of this nature. So more of a cautionary comment to me, by me, I think, and a restrictive comment.
Other?
Can we be sure this current contract does not violate the deed? I mean, is that... Was that clear?
I'll defer... I mean, that's a great question. I defer the solicitor on that one. You know, it's interesting. You read the will...
You can't defer to this.
I can't. Yeah, I have not been involved in this. I don't think I've ever even seen the agreement.
Yeah, there's something in the will that says you're supposed... The city's supposed to put a thousand dollars in its budget every year, which we don't do. And then they have to pay back the twenty thousand dollars. I mean, there's a lot of things that are, again, not quite a hundred years old, but... But that's... I can't answer. That's a good question. I don't know... To me, it reads the benefit of Way's Garden. It benefits Way's Garden. We strive to add language in there to better define our exclusive use to something that's being paid by somebody else and how it's handled going forward. So it remains to the benefit of Way's Garden, but I can't answer.
Mr. Wiley, would you please be able to address... Maybe not on that particular legal question, but you've heard the conversation this evening.
I might have to recuse myself, because J. Roman Way is my great-great-uncle, so I...
Well, then, you got to recuse yourself. Get out of there.
Good evening. It's nice to stand on this side of the dais, because I get to leave here at some point in time, and it looks like you have a long agenda. I'd like to make a couple of comments here this evening. First, on behalf of McCormick Law Firm, we view this as an opportunity to improve a portion of our community that needs the attention. The master plan that's been developed for the park, the steps that have already been taken and the steps that are going to be taken are going to continue to improve that resource for the community, not just in the short term, but in the long term. One of the comments that I had made previously about it is that Williamsport has a proud tradition with respect to public spaces. And if you look at the public spaces throughout the city, one of the areas where public spaces perhaps have not been given as much attention as others is in the historic district. And if you start on one of our main corridors, which is West Fourth Street, and look at the public spaces down through the historic district, this is the only one. The parking lot that is being proposed here has been in the master plan of this park for a long time. The parking lot itself and the gift that we're considering giving and the public-private partnership that this represents was not our idea. It came to us. Someone knocked on our door and suggested it. Our law firm has been in this community since 1862. We're not going anywhere. We have a proud tradition of giving back to this community. And we view this as an opportunity to continue that tradition with this particular gift here. One of the things that people have been talking about relative to the perpetual nature of the easement, I think people are looking at it the wrong way. You have a parking lot that's going to cost a private entity about fifty thousand to sixty thousand dollars to build. With this easement, the way that it's drafted, you have a guarantee that it's going to be maintained. You have a guarantee and a commitment to see it maintained. You have a guarantee and a commitment that it's going to be maintained and continue to be a private-public partnership, not just in the short term, in the initial life of the parking lot, but beyond, and maybe even beyond us. You have on your agenda this evening the capital budget. This city, as many communities are, is struggling with how to deal with capital improvements and paying for capital improvements. I'm not going to get into the politics of that, because quite frankly, I removed myself from those discussions a long time ago. And you seven will have to figure that out with the administration. But the idea that you're getting a parking lot that benefits Way's Garden, and benefits us, granted, but benefits Way's Garden, and the improvement dollar that's required from the city to get that done, not only to build it, but to maintain it, turns this really into a no-brainer, with all due respect. It's something that benefits that portion of the community, benefits those who use the park, and quite frankly, gives accessibility to that park that presently isn't there. The portion of Way's Garden where this parking lot's proposed, the restrictions regarding it are antiquated. I didn't realize that you couldn't have tomato plants back there. I've not planted any, but that was one of the restrictions. I'm not going to speak really in public as to what it's used for, but last night I had to ask someone to stop using it for what it's been used for primarily, which has been a public restroom. That's what this section of the park has been used for traditionally. This is an opportunity to allow Way's Garden to be used by more people, to have a resource so that people can drive to it and park in it, that in terms of public access to it, in terms of when the public uses it, it's going to be exclusive to the city. And quite frankly, is something that we're proud to be a part of. There was a comment here earlier about when this process started. I brought the file. I went and looked at it. This has been going on since 2014. Okay, there have been discussions about our involvement and our gift to the city on this project since 2014. There have been meetings, there have been dialogue, there's been draftmanship. This easement's been in the possession of the city since April. Yes, there have been some revisions to it. I think the revisions are good. We were proud to work with the city to get them done. I think it clarifies things. But if we're going to really sit here and start talking about little issues that, quite frankly, I think have already been resolved, it would be unfortunate. It'd be unfortunate to delay this. You know, we're already at a point where we still can get our contractor to construct it this season. You know, we've been waiting for a while on this. I appreciate the comments and the dialogue and the feedback, but we're really at a point where we need to know whether this is going to happen or not. And if the city doesn't want it, that's okay. It's not going to hurt our feelings. We think it'd be unfortunate, because you're going to have something that's a positive public improvement that either people are going to have to raise money for or capital funds are going to have to go to. But that's your choice. We're hopeful that you view the document and the intent that it was given, which is something that's for the benefit of our community, which represents a public-private partnership with a law firm that's been in our community since 1862, and something that will be stewarded and shepherded and maintained in a way that will benefit people long after all of us here in this room. I thank you for your time. I'm hopeful for a vote this evening. It's time for this to move forward, and thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley. Any other comments from counsel? Mrs. Mealy?
I actually just wanted to...
I actually just wanted to point out also, I don't think it's been discussed here at all, but this was forwarded from the Way's Garden Commission with a two-to-one recommendation, if I'm correct. So that probably is germane to the point that the majority of the Way's Garden Commission recommended this for approval. Oh, they did not, they didn't?
A two vote.
Uh huh. Oh, it's true.
Is there one there? He did not vote, Bob was not.
Oh.
Yeah, I refuse myself from this matter completely in terms of any discussions that Way's Garden.
Right, so I guess it's, a four-member commission is kind of awkward. The, the not-quite-majority of Way's Garden, all, all who voted voted in favor of it, I suppose. How about that? Okay, I, I don't know quite what that means, I apologize, so, but.
It's interesting.
Okay, well, I'm glad I opened that conference. Derek.
I do support the project. I think it would be good for the area. I agree. So maybe if it is approved here tonight, maybe we approve it pending there's no violation of the deed restriction. That way, I just don't want to see us opened up to any potential litigation if it were to. I mean, I think it's a great thing, I'm in support of this project, I want to be clear on that. I think it's good for the area, I think it's good for the park, and I think it's beneficial to be used, to have that park used for venues, as weddings, and as such. So I was, not here the other day, obviously, I was in school and had other commitments, but as long as we can ensure that piece, that's the only concerning piece to me. I don't want to open us up to any litigation, but I'm in support of the project, you know.
I was going to address that, as well as, as the easement, as, as, for my comments. That clause sounds, it may be purposely a little ambiguous, that I, I can just imagine different legal interpretations of it, depending on who, who hears it and from what perspective. So I look at it more, does this project fulfill the spirit of the deed and the purpose of the park? Rather than trying to parse the words and come up with percentages and of usage and everything like that. And, and when I look at it that way, I believe it does. I believe Jay Roman Way gave that land to be an enjoyment, a place of, for people to reflect and, and have a peaceful place. Well, and to this day and age, with as many vehicles we have on the road, and the noise and all the activity, you're really hard pressed within the city to find a totally peaceful place. But getting to those, for some people, requires a vehicle. And I think giving more access in that way meets in some, I would say, significant matters, meets in some significant means the ability of people to, to also enjoy the, the park. And as far as the easement, as we talked about the other day, and that McCormick's going to do the initial construction, it's not just laying down some macadam, it's building a substructure, a few feet deep, that has the 2B rock and, or B2 rock and, and everything on top of it, and then the macadam. So it, it's going to be, have a great foundation. Then they have to maintain it, they have to seal coat it, keep the lines painted in perpetuity, if the lot lasts that long, but we know it's not. At some point, it's going to need repaved, then it's a fifty-fifty proposition. But once that's repaved, that maintenance clause kicks back in, and McCormick, or whoever owns it at that point, is going to have to do that maintenance. And as I began to mull that over, I thought, well, should they sell it to somebody? I can see a lot of instances where that particular business, or whatever's using it, is going to say, because there is parking behind the McCormick building and, and some out front, some on the street, I, I can see them saying, we don't want the easement. I don't want to be responsible to seal coat and paint and maintain this parking lot, and then, in a certain amount of time, have to divvy up half the, the dollars for it. Now, it may be the case that doesn't happen, but I, I don't think it's necessarily always going to be a, a great selling point to another entity, or, I, I can just see that eventuality. In any case, the worst we have is a maintained parking lot and a shared cost rebuilding it, so.
Well, that, to add on to that point, if I may, I think the test, in my mind anyway, was, you know, whatever is done, it needs to benefit Way's Garden. So is there more of a benefit by doing the easement than what is there now? And I think clearly that there's much more of a benefit by doing the easement and having that improvement for Way's Garden than by doing nothing. And I think that's the test. Now, if the benefit was less, you know, if you were putting some improvement in there that takes away a benefit in terms of what is there now, then I think there may be an argument. But clearly, this is much more of a benefit than what is there now. So to me, that's, you know, in my mind, how I think it's, it's a positive thing.
Mr. Henderson.
As I've said before, I'm not against the project. I do believe that a parking lot would be of a great benefit to the park, and, and I'm not against the project itself, not against developing the lot. It's the process that concerns me. And, you know, even now, the resolution that we have in our hand is stapled to an easement agreement that we are not approving. You know, and that's, so we're, you know, we can't even really look at the num, you know, the, what we have here. And so we're just kind of trusting the discussion, and I'm not, I'm not doubting everybody's intentions. I'm not saying that there's somebody in here trying to do something ill-will. I just think if we do something, we ought to do it professionally, and we ought to do it well. And, and to the, to the process, to the, the five years that this has been, you know, in the making, I can't speak to that. I haven't been a part of that, but, but I can speak to what's before me now, and the issue that I, that I'm faced with today. And, and as far as I've been involved, you know, this is, this is a vote that I have to justify in my, in my own conscience. We've been talking a lot about the, the perpetual aspect of this agreement, and, and there's been a lot of, well, you know, maybe in the future this will happen, and this could happen, and if they, you know, well, why do we have to try to sort all that out? Couldn't we just make it a twenty-year, and, and then renew it after that point, or something like that? If it truly is a good agreement, then we'll want to renew. But if it's a, if it works out to not be a good agreement and a, and a good easement for us, well, we're stuck. And there's, that's it. And, and so, I mean, that's the way that, that I view it. Maybe that's not entirely the way that it is, but without the actual agreement stapled to the resolution that we are approving, this is the resolution, I'm assuming, you know, that, that's what I have to go on. And so let's work the process, let's work it professionally, let's work it well, and I think we can get it done. But I do not agree with hastening, hastening something through, because we got to get it done, we got to get it done, and, you know, which one we've got before us, we're not sure, but let's just do it and sort out the details later. And so, again, I'm not against the project. It's the process that concerns me, and, and for that reason, I, I will still have to vote no. But, but I will, you know, go with whatever council desires, obviously. I'm only one voice of seven. And so that's, that's where I am in this point.
If I can make a couple of points. You know, I, I agree, that's why I asked the question at the outset about, and we've done this before, where we've substituted an agreement, you know, we took something off the table and made a substitution, or amendment, or whatever, and that's why I asked that question. I thought I was just removing it from the table and, and, you know, with an amended But again, new matter, same thing, but again, the, the word changes came from input from council, from stakeholders, from the architect, from everybody, so I think it was, the language was thoroughly vetted. It's not a brand-new document, essentially, it's just a, a couple of things that were changed to meet the concerns of, of everybody involved. And, and again, you make a good point about the easement and perpetual, but again, that's why we worked with McCormick to, I wouldn't be comfortable, just like you're not comfortable, except that I'm comfortable in the fact now we have perpetual requirements. And I think that is a, a good thing. If it was just a perpetual easement, that's one thing, but if, when you add perpetual requirements to it in terms of maintenance, I think that makes it a good document. And that's my only comment.
Ms. Mealy.
I just wanted to make one further point. It actually occurred to me while you were talking, Mr. Henderson, that the one reason that we should perhaps be grateful for a perpetual easement is that I suspect when we get to the end of this particular layer of pavement, we, we may not in fact need as much pavement as we have. That is to say, in, in, in a world of, in a looming world of driverless cars and other amendments to the ways in which we transport ourselves, we may well arrive at a juncture where the question becomes less, who's going to maintain this parking lot, than what are we going to do with this parking lot? And, and in, in either case, if we had a twenty-year easement and we arrived at the end of it, and the question was, did McCormick want to re-up, did we want to re-up, both parties, of course, would have the option to step out, and it would certainly be convenient if the paving needed to be redone, to choose that moment. So, but I, I think on that note, I wanted to bring up a point that is near and dear to my heart, less germane perhaps here than in other places, but I, I am continually disturbed to see us celebrating the paving of something as an improvement in the city. On occasion, it is, but on other occasions, when we are paving new green space that has not been paved previously and has in fact been a garden, when we are paving things that we know, not in this case, but perhaps in the case of the alley behind Way's Garden, we will not be able to afford to repave and maintain. You know, we, we are, we are setting ourselves up for a situation that we can't afford in the future. We are also making the stormwater issues within the city and, and within the area worse with each passing element of pavement. And, and, you know, I don't know exactly how we solve that problem, but I do think it's something that we need to begin considering in a more substantial fashion than we have been. We are looking at a green alley, we have a million dollars, in fact, I believe, in the East Third Street neighborhood to construct a green alley, one. And, and that means that we are in some way or another accepting of the fact that the way in which we, we have been paving is not sustainable. But I, that is another, if small concern of mine with the whole concept, the, the fact that we feel the need to pave, I don't know, maybe fifteen percent of the park area in order to accommodate the needs of the people who want to use the other eighty-five percent seems to me like an element of, of consideration that, that deserves a little bit of time in the sun. That's everything I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Any other comments or questions? I'm inclined, myself, just to go ahead with the vote, because we've had a rather vigorous discussion with a lot of different viewpoints, and there's validity in each one of them that I've heard. I'm just not convinced that, were we to delay it, or take it to finance, or debate it any longer, that we wouldn't end up right at the same place. So I, I think in fairness, at this point, to, to all involved, ourselves, the Way's Garden Commission, and McCormick Law, that, that we should go ahead with the vote. Pardon me. Oh, I thought maybe, unless there's an objection to going ahead with it tonight. Mrs. Frank, then, on the motion, please.
Mrs. Spalsner.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
No.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Schlotter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
No.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Frank, motion passes. Thank you, counsel. I've got so much scribbling on here. Give me.
We're, we're still above the, the.
Oh, I, I wanted to.
You could send this guy out of here.
Well, we did.
Am I allowed to let him?
The resolution.
We could give it.
Okay.
Mr. Wiley.
It was nice to see it, counsel at work, appreciate the discussion. We look forward to the partnership that this represents, and I think the city will be in good hands.
Make sure you have the lights approved by the planning commission before you put them up, please.
You're welcome.
Number nine.
Okay, I'm going to move to item nine on our agenda, and item eleven on the agenda that the audience has. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
Resolution authorizing the City of Williamsport to award contracts for the City Hall Elevator and ADA Access Ramp.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion from council?
Someone.
Oh.
Or are we? Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm very confused.
Yeah, I am too. I saw Mr. Nichols, we're doing the City Hall.
Yep.
Oh, okay, all right.
No, my colleague behind the camera was, is, will come up if needed, or.
Oh, okay. I thought you were up there for the memo.
No, no.
And I had read them, okay.
We can do that, too.
All right, then.
I can multitask, I think. This is the City Hall, right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, this should be, anyway, in your packet of information, you received a briefing memo on the status of the City Hall Improvement Project. This included information about the September eleventh bid opening, the solicitor and project team review of the bid documents to determine the responsive and responsible low bidder, and an update on available funds for the project. In addition, you received then the resolution, which is before you authorizing the award of contracts of the City Hall Elevator and the ADA Access Ramp projects. The projects that we are recommended for award are the base bid, which again is the elevator improvement project, and add alternate number one, which is the ADA Access Ramp part of the bid process. And the total of the award for the base bid and the add-on number one is seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. And again, as I mentioned, that in your briefing memo, we described that the residual bond funds that are available for the project and contingency funds from the City Hall budget would be sufficient to fund the seven seventy-nine, six twenty. And Chris Cooley, Joe Pavlock, and myself can answer any questions about the project. I do want to mention that Chris spent an order amount of time on the specs, working with our CM, but he did a, he done his job of making sure that we did have clean specs this time around, and that we, that we, that we would get the best bids possible for this project. So I do want to thank Chris for his efforts. So I'll defer back to the chair for any questions for me or any on the team, as well as Joe Girardi, also was involved. He still is very sad that we abandoned the Girardi ramp. He still is very sad that we abandoned the Girardi ramp part that was initially considered, but I think he'll get over it.
We can resurrect that. We can make a nice plaque for you.
This item was reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Oh, it was reviewed, that's right. Finance, please.
Was reviewed at length by the Finance Committee. So yes, the Finance Committee shepherded a rather lively conversation about this item on Tuesday afternoon. As a Finance Committee, of course, our chief responsibility is not in fact to review the specs of the items that are being proposed to be constructed, that fell to public works earlier in the season, our responsibilities are the financial implications of any item on our agenda. And the financial implications of this item are pretty complex, to be honest, the specific issue being that the numbers that we were hoping to receive for the bids were about 20% lower, a little more than 20% lower than the numbers that we did in fact get. And consequently, that puts us as a Finance Committee and frankly, all of us as a city government, in a little bit of a pickle, the funding that we had allocated, whether it be from bond funding or in the City Hall Fund, is not sufficient to cover all of the costs that we had anticipated doing as part of this renovation to City Hall. And the bids, that is to say, are more than $200,000 over the monies that we had allocated. While this does not in any way, at least in my discussions with everyone, mean that City Council and the city don't wish to move forward with the project in some form, whether it's the same or slightly modified so that it can meet the budget that we know that we have for the project, in the opinion of the Finance Committee, the unexpected costs of the items makes it incumbent upon a fiscally responsible City Council and administration to step back for a few weeks. And we thought it necessary that we take time to figure out how we will be covering the costs that have come in for us. The Finance Committee thus forwarded this item to the full body of council with a recommendation to table two to one, pending further fiscal review.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy.
And I will defer to other members of council if they wish to follow up on that recommendation.
We felt very strongly that we needed to have some legal counsel on this whole project, and we needed some advice from legal counsel. We also felt that there needs to be a look at a plan for the entire city, all city buildings, and Mr. Girardi volunteered to be the person to put together within a month or so that kind of plan, and we could look at that as well, but those are the two areas that we felt that was really important for us to take a look at.
If I may suggest, there wasn't a second, in order to be able to discuss, somebody must make a second.
That's true. Actually, I think there was a motion and a second, you seconded it the first time, right?
Yeah. I thought there was.
Then there was some discussion about what it was we were motioning and seconding, but we all actually were on the same page.
Mr. Noviello.
I will never have an argument with taking more time to vet more facts, and it looks like this is a situation that requires exactly that. We've been on hold for a long enough period of time, and I would think another 25, 30 days would be relatively insignificant, but paramount in how much information we can obtain, and which is going to be very relevant to what we have in mind here. And we're talking close to a million dollars here, we have a responsibility, as was already mentioned, to be mindful of how we use that money. And if we're over budgeted immediately, $200,000, that's a red light for me, at least as far as the opportunity to vet more information, so I would support tabling based on the idea of obtaining more information.
Are you making motion to table?
I will make that motion to table if it has, I thought it was already made, I'm sorry.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to table. We can't have discussion on a table, can we, Austin?
After it's tabled, you can't talk about it.
Whether or not it should be tabled.
Okay.
We can discuss the table.
Anyone have any points?
Okay. Joe.
I would just agree, I mean, I think it's irresponsible of us to pass this if we do not have the money to do it. I mean, that just, wow, so I agree with this tabling motion, we've got to figure this out first, thank you.
Mayor, we're, yeah, it's tabled, so we're.
We have to vote, it's not tabled yet.
You have to vote.
Yeah, yes, the question of tabling or not, not.
If anybody wants to come up with an answer to table, that would be appropriate.
Yeah. Ms. Mealy.
Just a quick question, Mr. Nichols, I believe, how long do we have to accept these bids, they're valid for 60 days?
Ah, yeah, it's only 60 days.
Okay, and we received them on September 11th?
11th.
Okay, so that would mean obviously a decision by early November, which is far longer than what we're contemplating, so.
Correct, you would have until November.
November, probably right around Election Day now that I think about it, but anyway, but around November 7th or something like that would likely be our.
I can get you the exact date, but I.
But anyway, that, it's a moot point because the delay we're contemplating is a matter of two weeks or possibly slightly more, but nothing that would take us that far out, so.
Okay, any more questions on the motion to table? Motion, second, okay, there are none, Mrs. Frank, on the motion to table, please.
Mrs. Spalsner.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion to table passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Now, Mr. Nichols, while you're up there. Item 13 on our sheet, and item 15 in the public municipal, minimum municipal obligation, Mrs. Frank, please.
Resolution, minimum municipal obligation for the year ending 2020.
Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion and a second.
Thank you, and again, this is, I'm sorry.
I'm, go ahead.
This resolution sets forth the city's minimum pension obligation for the next budget year, as required by Act 205, and this is required by the state, and this resolution and related pension reports are prepared by the city's actuary, Mockenhop, Benefits Group, and this always has to be submitted to City Council before the end of September. Next year's MMO requirement is calculated for $1,368,774 and is based on the current employee census information, the January 1, 2017 valuation, and various pension fund assumptions which have been established by the three different city pension boards. I gave you a comparison, Joe provided a comparison, a table showing a comparison of next year's MMO to the last three years, good news, it's less, a little over $100,000 less than this year's MMO, so that's great news, and the savings decrease over in 2019 results from a decreased amortization payment, which essentially I like to call the mortgage, which is the unfunded portion or unfunded liability exists in each pension fund. So, you know, that's a big part of next year's budget, and so that's a little bit of good news, and we ask for your approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols, I think I can say without hesitation that this is our least favorite report and resolution of the year. Having said that, it was reviewed by Finance.
Yes, Finance reviewed it, and we were, of course, pleased with the $100,000 difference between last year and this year in our favor, that said, it is still a $4.3 million obligation, of which the state, I believe, helps fund 1.3 million, correct? Making it about a $3 million annual obligation that the city has, or also known as 12.5% of our annual budget. Not insignificant, in other words. I threatened to go through Dr. Williamson's formerly annual spiel related to the former councils and administrations not having accepted the responsibility of funding the pensions and consequently it falling to us to try to figure out a way in which to fund them, but I couldn't quite get the wording down right, and we didn't manage to queue up the video, I don't believe, Mr. Cooley, so you all will be spared a little bit of that. That said, we did discuss the fact that I believe if the pensions were fully funded, our annual obligation would be, I want to say it was 2.4, 2.6 million, Joe? I said if the pensions were fully funded.
Be $2.5 million less.
Oh, $2.5 million, yeah, so, so right, so our obligation would be 1.8 million, of which 1.3 would still be funded by the state, because that funding is not because we were late getting around to it, but rather because it's simply pension help. So had previous generations of council and administration thought to fund this obligation, we would be facing a significantly smaller amount of funding we need to put into it, and we would be able to put that funding into the other employee benefits section, we are not funding it all ourselves, so that is something else that bears thinking on. While we are addressing the pensions and while our pension plan is, I believe, currently 80% funded, more or less.
No, we're around 90.
Okay, 90.
We are.
Which frankly is unexpectedly good for a city in the Commonwealth right now.
As far as the unfunded plan, we are listed at the top, and A, I mean, we are really better off than most, probably 90% of every other city.
Yeah, exactly.
So, we're getting close, you know, depends, of course, on the stock market and other things, but.
But we are not dealing with our other employment benefit obligations at all, so that's a huge hole, but if we succeed in filling this one, we can begin filling that one. That said, Finance forwarded it to the full body of council with a reluctant but positive recommendation.
And to add, what you mentioned at the Finance Committee is that the valuation occurs every two years, and this is based on the 1-117 valuation, we're still waiting for the 1-119 valuation, which could come up with a number that's less than what this initial calculation showed, so you may have an option to do that, or it could come in higher, but you can still stick with this one, so. So as soon as we get the valuation, we'll report that to council, just as an update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols, comments from council?
I just want to give my applause to McCormick, not McCormick, to the Wells Fargo Company and, is it McGraw?
McGee, C.S. McGee.
McGee, for their responsibility and for their diligence, they really have done a great job for us, and they had a lot of information to share with us, good information, and they were very cautionary to look in the future, they think the market will be up and down, and we should just hold fast, and they've done a great job for us.
Other comments? I agree with everything said, and it's astounding to just consider that figure of if we were fully funded, $2.5 million savings a year. Oftentimes, we're compared to surrounding communities, and Williamsport is expensive, Williamsport, this, that, and the other thing. Other communities are not dealing with this reality that our third-class city has and the obligations we have to provide police and fire protection, so it's a great place to live, these are expenses that right now we can't do anything about, and hopefully we're heading in the direction where future councils won't have to deal with that. Seeing no other comments or questions, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mrs. Spalsner.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Excuse me, we will move to item 10, 11, and 12, all handled by Mrs. Young, and that will be 12, 13, and 14 on the other agenda. In short form, item 10, please.
Resolution authorizing a subrecipient agreement between the City of Williamsport and the American Rescue Workers.
Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion and a second, Mrs. Young.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The funding for this agreement and the next two agreements was approved during the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Budget Process. This particular subrecipient agreement allocates $30,000 of 2019 CDPG funds to the American Rescue Workers for building renovations to their property located at 643 Almira Street. The scope of work includes repairing the mortar and brick and repainting along the west side of the building, and this agreement was reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Young, Finance.
Finance did review this, we had a pleasant and brief discussion with the representative from the American Rescue Workers, whose name I apologize, I can't.
Valerie Fessler.
Okay, Valerie Fessler, and the building, the work done on the building so far looks great, and we look forward to seeing it completely renewed, forwarded to the full body of council, it's a positive recommendation.
Other comments or questions? It's a great organization, and they serve a very great need in the city. Mrs. Frank, on the motion, please.
Mrs. Spalsner.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Frank, and motion passes, item 11 then.
Resolution authorizing a subrecipient agreement between the City of Williamsport and the Lycoming County SPCA.
Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion and a second, thank you.
Yes, this subrecipient agreement allocates $7,000 of 2019 CDPG funds to the Lycoming County SPCA for its spay-neuter voucher program for the pets of low-income residents. We've funded this program for a number of years, so I think you're probably mostly familiar with this, and this was also reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Young, Finance.
And forwarded with a positive recommendation from Finance, I don't think that, we have already allocated these funds and discussed these funds in the budget, so, you know, okay.
Any other comments or questions from council, if not, Mrs. Franklin, the motion, please.
Mrs. Spalsner.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Frank, and motion passes, item 12 then.
Resolution authorizing a subrecipient agreement between the City of Williamsport and Fire Tree Place.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second.
And this is the last subrecipient agreement, and it allocates $6,000 of 2019 Community Development Block Grant Funds to the Fire Tree Place After-School Program. These funds will reimburse Fire Tree Place for the salary costs of four full-time counselors, and also, agreement was also reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Young.
Finance also forwarded this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Any comments or questions from council? Seeing none, Mrs. Frank.
Mrs. Spalsner.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Frank, and that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Young.
We will move to item 14 on ours and item 16 in short form.
Resolution authorizing the execution of a feasibility study of a joint project involving the cooperation of the City of Williamsport and the Department of Environmental Protection pertaining to the flood protection program.
Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion and a second, Mr. Winder, good evening.
Good evening, how are you guys? I'll give you this in the short form, this is basically an agreement allowing DEP to come in and execute a feasibility study on Graffius Run. It gets things moving in the right direction, I've included quite a bit of documents in a binder for everyone, with that, I included a letter from Loyahsack Township that on Tuesday night, the mayor, Mr. Banner, and I attended the Loyahsack Township meeting, it was productive, Bill Burdette agreed to issue this letter to the residents along Graffius Run, which I think was a great help, they've agreed to sit down with. They've agreed to sit down with DEP and have Loyal Sock Township onboard, moving forward to make this a collaborative effort to resolve the issues with Graffius Run. Jason Fitzgerald did an excellent job working with Doug Hill to get this moving, so we're now just asking for your approval on this resolution to keep it moving in a positive direction.
Thank you, Mr. Winder. This was reviewed by Public Works?
Yes, and it was passed with a positive recommendation, full body of council. As we discussed, DEP is putting us in their capital budget to the tune of $330,000 to do the study for Graffius Run. We have gone through so many, so many problems with Graffius Run, as I think Mrs. Fosna has pointed out to us, over 50 years, and it's about time that we're hitting this head on. We have had Penn Strategies with Jason Fitzgerald and Sid First, who are in constant contact with Doug Hill from DEP, which I think is, it's incredible how fast this is starting to move. It's also incredible the meeting that the mayor and Adam Winder went to with Loyal Sock. We're starting to get a conglomeration here. That's the wrong word.
We know what it means.
We'll call it a joint effort.
Thank you. And it's good that we have the township and the city working together, because we'll also be able to get more funding when this is all laid out in the total program. DEP will be coming into the city in October. We will have a walkthrough and we will have more information, and I think we're starting to see a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel here, and hopefully it's going to be a floodlight within the next few months. So, this was, like I said, this was passed on the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
The only thing, if I can, it was actually a million dollars they put in their capital budget, Jason?
Yeah, maybe $34,000.
We forgot about that one, that was a biggie.
Questions? Mrs. Fosna?
On Monday evening, over 50 residents of the Graffius Run area met together, and we had a wonderful meeting and discussion and talk about the problem that we've been facing for decades. At that meeting, Penn Strategies was there, the city was there, and one of the recommendations was to go to talk to Loyal Sock, because they are about 50% of the problem, and you did that, and I really, really appreciate that happening. I appreciate the movement with DEP, and I'm very, I've been sharing with neighbors the last couple of days, and they're very pleased. They had some very productive ideas and ways that we can solve the problem. We still have a little problem in Cochran with the school district. The logs are all set up, so they need to be moved.
They are, they're down.
But I'm, no, they're not down, I saw them today.
But they're-
But they're going to be.
Okay.
So, I think those things have been addressed quickly and expediently, and we really appreciate it, because we do know it's going to rain again, and we know the problem is going to exist again, but if we can take one step at a time and keep moving forward, that would be very helpful to all of us that live in that area. A very beautiful area of the city with residents that are wonderful residents, so thank you very much for your work, and I look forward to lots of movement, not just discussion in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Noviello?
You know, we were talking about perpetual, this is the definition of one perpetual. It's a continuing saga, I'm glad to see this step is one of the largest steps we've made so far, and I think one of the most relevant steps at the same time. We've argued it, we've discussed it, and we vetted it out time and time and time again. The facts haven't changed, water still comes, we still get flooding. So, this step is the first major step, I think, to really resolving this, and I think the government has a tendency to, once it sort of contributes some funds, they will follow those funds with action as well. So, I'm thankful for this, and I want to thank Adam and his crews, and all those who were out during those flood nights, ankle-deep in water, trying to make things right, so this is a good advantage for you guys as well, so thank you all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Others? Mr. Slaughter?
Yeah, just briefly to address Mrs. Fosna. I did talk to Dr. Bowers, and he assured us that the logs are going to be removed, so he talked to the head of maintenance. They're also looking to address the mats underneath the swing sets, so, because they clog up the catch basin as well, so there's those large black mats that get stuck, so, but the logs are going to be removed, and hopefully a replacement for the mats or something that's not going to float and clog the catch basins as well.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? We're all happy that we're taking some big steps, so, thank everybody that's already been thanked. Mrs. Franklin, the motion, please.
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank, and the motion passes. Item 15.
Resolution authorizing the excavation of certain streets for a gas main replacement project by the City of Williamsport for UGI Utilities, and the first one is for Campbell Street.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion in second. Mr. Girardi?
Yes, what you have before you is a request by UGI to extend, well, I'll start by Part 9 Streets, Utilities, and Public Services. Basically, under Article 901, it states that all roadwork must be completed before the end of the paving season, with sometime around November, Thanksgiving, sometime in that area. From time to time, UGI or Water Authority will come in front of this committee and request an extension of time, because they'll start a project, because they are also mandated, like we get mandated, to do certain things, they have to replace gas lines. There's two projects they wish to extend into the winter months, one of them is Campbell Street. This is the standard resolution that has been brought in front of council many times. What we added to this particular thing that is, says basically, whereas city council of the City of Williamsport, Pennsylvania shall require all cuts to match existing base course or a minimum of six inches, whichever is greater to the top of the road surface. I did have that changed, it's W-H-I-C-H, she has the change, okay, you guys have W-I-T-C-H, okay? This is actually, allows them to do that, we don't allow cold patch in the road, because it breaks up, it doesn't work well, so we do require base, as long as they make the base, once that base is done, then they're required to go with the four inches of high-performance cold patch, which has been something that Public Works has always recommended and required. This did go through Public Works, it came through with a positive recommendation, and I'll turn it over to, if you have any questions, myself or Public Works.
Yes, it did come to Public Works. This being done in Campbell Street is an area where there isn't a lot of traffic, but it's, and it's one of the projects that they've taken on that is not a mandated project in this area. But we want to see it get done, we want to, there's so many mandated projects that the gas company has to go through this year, in the next couple of years, and that's why there's so many streets being torn up, but it's all for the benefit of everybody at this point. We did approve this, we don't like going past the time period that we set in our ordinance, but we also want to see these projects get done, because every time something is left for next year, it just keeps on adding on and adding on, and then we get backlogged. So, we didn't see a problem with this at all, and we did pass this with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Mrs. Katz? Ms. Mealy?
So, just to be clear, even the four inches of high-performance cold patch, that's intended to be a permanent fix?
Just for the winter months.
Okay, just for the winter, got it.
And then they'll come back through, dig it out, put the base down, and then they'll mill and overlay. We require that done 45, about 45 days after, I think it says in here, when the plant's open up, they're required to have it done within 45 days of that time.
Thanks, sir. They've been doing something there the last, this whole week, they've been doing something?
Yes, they're permitted to work anytime they want during the season that the plants are open. The reason why they're doing this is they're requesting the time, because they know they're not going to get it done prior to the plant's closing, that's why. They don't need to, they don't need to come in front of council for that cut, we authorize that as an administration. It's the timeframe that they're not permitted to work in that they're asking for.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council tonight? If not, Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Frank, motion passes, item 16.
Resolution authorizing the excavation of certain streets for a gas main replacement project by the City of Williamsport for UGI Utilities, and this one's for Almond Street.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion in second, Mr. Girardi?
Yes, the only thing is, again, the six inch, whichever comes better, we did change that, because that was an error on my part, it is, Janice has the correct wording. Also, just to let you know, this is, again, very similar to what we just approved, the same type of material will be used. If you get an opportunity, need to go down and take a look at Fifth Avenue in that particular area, right now they're milling and overlaying, that was a joint project between the City of Williamsport and the gas company. We'll have a completely new road in those areas, where a lot of times, if we don't go in with them on a piggyback, what we call it, or a joint effort, you get half a road width, you get a dry seam, I believe that's what it's called, and then it's not really a good mix. When we do the whole road, it comes out very nice, and that's what you'll see up there right now, is that they're up in that area, they're going to have some beautiful roads, with the help of the gas company and the city working together.
Public Works?
Yes, this did come to Public Works, and this was passed with a positive recommendation. Now, this one is a mandated program that they have to fulfill. They are hoping to get this finished by late November to December, weather-wise, and let's keep our fingers crossed, and again, they will, they will make sure that everything is finished in the spring, come the spring. And we saw no problem, again, with starting this project now. We know that it's, you know, it's going to start after October, what did they say, October 30? They're going to go beyond October 31st, so it's, you know, we want to see this get finished.
Other questions or comments? I can verify that this is an important one, from personal experience, the old steel-gas mains were getting infiltrated by water-
Water.
-on a regular basis, and-
Correct.
They're putting in plastic, so, it'll be solved. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Frank, and motion passes. Now I've got the right one for Mr. Nar, item 17, 19 on yours. Mrs. Frank, please. Oh.
Good evening, President Allison and members of council. Again, what I present to you is a lot consolidation plan by Lycoming College and in a dedication of land. What this is, is actually they're going to consolidate eight parcels, which is currently a parking lot, they are dedicating or deeding 25 feet of that area to the city to widen Basin Street. This is an administrative action to finalize the actual land development plan that was approved by council over a year ago in reference to the East Third Street Gateway. If you remember, we talked about Phase 1, Phase 2. This is actually Phase 2 of it. Again, this is not a, land development goes through a process that must be approved prior to, this is an administrative action saying that prior to them utilizing something or completing it, then that's what the lot consolidation is for, so this is just merely a final phase of that. It did not jump the gun or go ahead of anything, this is a process that it normally goes through. The city's always done that, for example, if someone wants to develop over a lot line, prior to the project being completed, this administrative action must be completed, so we're just merely going through that process. It was reviewed by both Planning Commission and county with positive recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Nar. This, no, it's not reviewed, but are there any comments or questions from council? Is there a-
Randy, you need a motion.
Oh, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. There's a motion in second. Mr. Henderson?
We have these kind of land developments often, would you just familiarize me with how a deed of dedication works? What's the process for that?
It's just realistically a formality or terminology that they're using. Basically, what will happen is, is this lot consolidation, if you look on your plan, it'll have the Z's. So, once council approves this, this will actually be taken to the courthouse and deeded, so that 25-foot will then be deeded to the city's property at that point. That's merely all that it is, it's just a fancy word for the dedication.
Sure, and that, but that would be the initiative of the college, correct? Because they own it.
Correct. What will happen is, is once providing council approves this, a formal letter will be sent to them, signatures will be done, they have 90 days to get it recorded and provide it to us that it has been recorded and deeded.
Okay, and I know it's a different project, but just thinking ahead, we're going to be going through the same process for the Franklin Street realignment, as far as the deed of dedication from the college, is that correct?
Correct, that is a process that I believe Mr. Benner's already taking that ord, is in the process of going through the ordinance, I believe that was through first reading.
Well, I know that our vacation, we vacated the current-
That was, again, what it is, is it's part of the land development plan that you approved, you approved the realignment of Franklin Street, however, we do not want to do that till the very end of the project, and that's where the ordinance comes into place to basically move that over as such.
We should have confirmation of that.
It's the same process.
Right.
Correct.
I'm just trying to get familiar with the process, so, all right, thank you, appreciate that.
Other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sla, Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank, motion passes. We will go down to item 22, Certificates of Appropriateness, Harb. All items have been recommended for approval, and there's only one. I'm not going to read it, 531 West Fourth Street, and they're going to do some painting and patching and repairing the surfaces. Is there a motion from council?
So moved.
Second. Motion in second, any questions or comments? Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Mrs. Frank, motion passes. Item 23, except for filing public safety minutes of 5/7/19, finance minutes of 7/16/19, Veterans Memorial Minutes, July 2019, and the codes report of April 2018. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion in second, any question? None, Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Frank.
Just out of curiosity, I believe you're requiring a code report, it should be April, twenty?
Nineteen.
Right.
I do believe they both say May, twenty, eighteen, though.
Okay, I believe you're requiring from April, twenty, eighteen, through, and include about two, April nineteen, I'm going to connect.
They, they, they all say May, twenty, eighteen.
Well, first from April through, and then you have first.
No, I'm, I'm looking at the packet.
Oh, the March.
They all say twenty, eighteen.
You're talking about the March, twenty, nineteen.
You know what? That's my fault. I didn't separate them.
Oh, okay.
I thought they were one complete packet.
From April to, I believe, March this year.
Yes.
Do you have March?
I have March.
I have, no, I'm wondering if each of us wound up with a whole bunch of one month.
Each of you have one month, yes.
Okay. So I have, I have May.
Oh, all right. Up this year.
No, May of twenty, eighteen.
Eight, that's March.
Okay. I got it. Okay, well, now that we've clarified that, I think we can all.
We'll pull mine next to Jenna.
Shall we, do we need to amend? Okay. It's on the record.
Okay.
Announcements, then, the most exciting part of the meeting. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held Thursday, October tenth, right here at seven thirty P.M. Upcoming meetings, Monday, September thirtieth, twelve P.M., Plan, Planning Commission; Tuesday, October first, three thirty P.M., ERC; Tuesday, October eighth, one P.M., Finance Committee; two thirty P.M., Public Works; three thirty P.M., Public Safety. Those are all the meetings we have. I, there's nothing on the back page. I need to announce, we're having an executive session following the closing of this meeting to discuss legal and contractual matters and personnel. Comments from council tonight? We all, we're all talked out. Comments from the administration. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of comments to make. First of all, I thought this was a very, very good meeting, a lot of dialogue, and I think it was very productive, so I'd like to thank city council for that.
Thank you.
Second comment is, I'd like to request an executive session concerning regionalization negotiations, so if I could give you an update on something that we've been working on, I'd appreciate it.
Tonight, then, you want to jump in on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And then I have some great news. Now, for a period of time, we have spoken about where is this five oh four plan, and I challenged my staff to find it, and the best researcher concerning this was Mrs. Young. So Mrs. Young would like to make a couple of comments, and Mr. Girardi. Thank you. Mrs. Young?
Well, I'm not really prepared to make a couple of comments, but.
You can defer to me.
It's so late.
Well, that's one comment right there.
I don't know if I have it in me. Yeah, this five oh four plan, let me just grab it here, is a self-evaluation that was done for HUD. It was a directive from HUD, and we weren't sure where it was. I just happened to open a drawer in my office, and it's from nineteen ninety, so it's an older plan, but section five oh four has to do with accessibility. And so in nineteen ninety, we were required to submit this plan to HUD, and it's regarding city hall and accessibility issues, and HUD did respond to us at the time. At this point, we don't have to report back to HUD with any updates. They recommend that you keep your file updated, and that if there are any changes that you want to make, that you make those changes and that you update the file. In all the years that I've been here and I've been monitored from HUD, they've never come in to look at the plan to see if there are any updates, and as I say, they've never given us any directives about what to do with the plan, but we were excited to find it, and it's, as I say, a self-evaluation for section five oh four accessibility improvements. And I think at the time, I just glanced at it, but the ramp had been done, and I think the elevator had been done as well. And obviously, there have been some changes to the regulations since nineteen ninety, but at this point, at least with HUD, we're in good standing as far as anything that we require from that agency. So.
Thank you.
Basically, add on to what she was, Stephanie was talking about. We do have the plan. There are seven steps that are involved in this plan. They're all implemented in the nineteen ninety plan, okay? The only difference is now we need to appoint a new ADA coordinator, and I believe at Public Works, they designated myself as that ADA coordinator. We'll be giving you some additional information. I did want to say just one other thing, that it was advertised in the paper in nineteen ninety legally. We did get a correspondence back from them concerning some minor issues. Over the last twelve years, I know that there's been some conflict in pointing of fingers of this person or that person. I just wanted to clarify some things. We did do three, at least three studies, if not more. We did come in front of the city council for some proposals and bids, which were accepted concerning A.C., concerning new roof repairs, extension of the sprinkler systems. Also, at that time, we also did a accessibility counter and, down in our codes department, was, was approved by this board, which was provided by this administration, that we did make that handicap accessible. We also made, the police department did some renovation work to theirs. That was also made ADA accessible, which was approved by council and presented by this administration. So we have provided some additional things in this. We will continue to do that, and hopefully, within the next three or four weeks, I'll be meeting, of course, with Ms. Mealy, we talked about that, bringing forward you the other things that need to be corrected in this facility. The handicap bathroom on the first floor was also renovated, which is a public restroom which does meet today's standards. The ramp meets, the ramp itself, I back, meets the ADA standards of today. The issue is getting to that ramp, okay? And the only other thing, back in nineteen ninety, the elevator was fine as far as the size of the elevator. The problem was the relocation of the switches, which then you couldn't do, they just didn't have the technology to do it. Now we do, but we'd have to renovate the cabin and make it more accessible with the buttons and so forth, and that's really part of that process that we're going to talk about here later with the elevator and so forth. So the question was, do we have a plan? We were concerned. We do have a plan, it's been filed, okay? We're, we're in good standings with the federal government at this point, but we still do, we still need to keep making renovations to this building, possibly at budget time, we had some funding for that, depending on what we do, maybe a minor amount of money, but again, I know that our Recreation Department can do a lot of the work here in-house instead of hiring out bidding, which is a lot cheaper for us to go out and buy some handicap handles than it would be for.
Streets and parks.
Streets and parks, sorry. For streets and parks to do it, it's a lot cheaper for them to do it and them to purchase it instead of going out for bids. And of course, you know how that works.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Question, the plan that you have there, is it possible to have Mrs. Frank have a copy of that?
What I intend.
That we can share and talk and look through?
What I intended to do on Monday, make a copy for all council, because I would like to go ahead, and since I'm going to be the coordinator, I want to make sure I can read this, so this, if you have any questions of me, I can understand it and give you back some information.
Thank you.
So I definitely intended to give everybody a copy of the plan. I didn't have an opportunity to even give the mayor a plan yet, because Stephanie found this here later on in the afternoon, and I think everybody here should chip in a little bit of money and get her gift certificate.
Way to go, Stephanie.
To one of her favorite restaurants for finding this plan. But no, I just wanted to bring everybody up to date, because there was some talk at the last meeting, and I just want to make sure, to put everybody at ease, we do have a plan, and it has been implemented, and it's been slowly getting to the point where we're trying to make this building accessible.
Well, the story is, don't get rid of any.
Yes.
Don't get rid of anything.
May I, may I ask who submitted that plan?
What's that?
May I ask who submitted that?
Yes, it, the plan was submitted by.
The community development director at that time.
Which, Mr. David Raiter.
Rider.
Rider.
David Rider.
Yep, and at the time, her father was the president, he signed it.
Awesome.
Yeah, Dr. Hippel signed it as, as, as the council, as the council president.
Yeah, there was a, a resolution accompanying.
Yes.
It just, it occurs to me that with all the, it, it's been a very intense process up to this point, and has had its ups and downs, but these are significant findings, and we're, it's, I look at it, it's actually a good thing. We've had this need to confront this right now, because we're going to actually find out where we are, where we were, and where we need to be, and I think that's helpful all the way around. So we'll take this as a great positive in moving this forward, because I, I don't think there's any disagreement between the administration and council that we want to be compliant, we want to be accessible. So we're going to get there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from the administration tonight? Seeing none, comments from the public? Okay. Oh, there's a process. You'll be next, and you go up front and give your name and address, and then, Mr. Miller, welcome.
I know the procedure.
You sure do.
Scott Miller, eight twenty-two Tucker Street. Good evening, Council President Allison and other council members and administration. External obsolescence. What does that mean? It means my property value goes down because of something I cannot control. This is a real estate term. On the East End, our property values have gone down as compared to the values in the rest of, of Williamsport due to the school being closed and not coming back. The pool was removed, it looks horrible, and now the firehouse is going to be sold off. No other section of Williamsport has lost so many of the public services that the East End has. Did y'all know that east of Almond Street, your, or, I'm sorry, west of Almond Street, your elementary kindergarten student is required to walk to Cochrane Elementary, yes, crossing Market Street? I had to fight with Penn Dout about the Bedinkah Donk lights there some years ago, which I just think is absurd, you know? And so my house value as compared to everybody else's, and not just mine, but the East End there, our values haven't gone up like everybody else's would, because we're losing school, pool, and now the firehouse. Second thing I want to bring up tonight is, I see catch basins, I notified the city about many years ago, are now completely failing, i.e. collapsing in on themselves. About four years ago, I worked as a waiver over here at the Liberty Tax Place, and I told the city, I came here, I've brought photographs, I had them blown up. It's got lines on there, but what, how many more years will it be before it's fixed? And there's also another one up on Sheridan Street that I came here with photographs and stuff, you know, and it's collapsing in. Yeah, there's lines, but from my estimation, it takes six years for y'all to fix something. Now, if my house were in code violation, Joe Girardi ain't giving me six years to fix it, and I find it unfair that the city doesn't keep their infrastructure in good repair as property owners are required to. Last thing I want to point out is, some years ago, a sewage pipe under the river coming from South Williamsport to our sewage treatment plant broke. It, you know, failed. The EPA fined the authority, but we, the ratepayers, are the ones who ultimately paid those fines, something we can't control, but somebody in the sewer authority, someone, somewhere, some government authorized person failed to do their job. It's not like it just broke willy-nilly. They knew it was going to fail, it was just when, and they let it fail. Shouldn't the people that did not do their job in a good way be the ones that pay the fine instead of us ratepayers? You know, when I get a speeding ticket, I don't get to give it to everybody in this room to pay. I have to pay it. When somebody doesn't do their job in government, those responsible for the negligence of their duty should be the ones that pay it out of their paycheck. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too.
My name is Joanne Clementoni, and I live on Chestnut Street in the East End, and I would like to talk about the fact that our street, and that's the upper part of Chestnut Street, above Shaw Park, has not been repaved. It has terrible potholes. It is, the bus comes up our street, and also, it's used because of the hospital. There's trucks from UPS, UPMC that come down our street. It's a heavily traveled street, really. Buses, the, the school buses come up the street, and it's really getting bad. The, the potholes are terrible, okay? And they're only getting worse, like potholes are tend to do. The other thing is, and I just, I just wanted to say this because they said we were going to get it paved at the end of the summer. Well, it's past the end of the summer, and it's getting on to winter, and you know, we can't really do anything about it if it gets too late in the year. The other thing is, is Shaw Park. I've heard a lot coming to the council meetings about Memorial Park and how you're fixing it up and how, and it's, and which is wonderful, but well, let's not forget, Shaw Park is heavily used. They play Pee Wee football there, people walk there. It, it's a really nice little park. We, we walk it all the time. The problem is, is the walks, they, they're just blacktopped walkways. They're heaving from the winter freeze, they're, the roots of a tree, they're, they're, it really, they, all they need to be is refixed, you know, redone. And they're not all of them, they're just a few that are, that are really in bad shape. And the, the other thing is, is what, the one thing that really bothers me is the graffiti on the handball court. I, I don't like that. I consider it part of what they call the broken windows policy.